Meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing that we held for 35 United Drive. I'll start out by introducing the board. On my right is Tony Kinnahan, James Noes, our planner, Tracy Aldridge, and a member, Jerry Stetson, and our recording secretary, Donna Carter. With that being said, I'll let the engineer for the 35 United Drive make his presentation, please.
Thank you. Hi. Adam Hunn, here with Nick Fassendorff with Local Design Group on behalf of Ajax United Drive, from LSC. We met, last met before the board in December. Since, we've been working with Conservation, we've revised the plans. We actually got approval from Conservation last Tuesday. Excuse me. We made a couple minor revisions. The snow storage has now been removed from the perimeter of the parking lot in the back and put into the pavement and specifically to drain to the drainage system so that there'd be no snow melt towards the wetland. As far as the layout materials, that was really the only big change. The grading revised the drainage systems, derived additional stone for phosphorus removal. The grading scheme and everything else is as it was last time we met. We're providing 80% TSS removal, excuse me, being all of my requirements. I believe that those were the only two major comments that they had when they were meeting.
There was some issue with the elevation of the parking lot in the vicinity of the doorways. Have you addressed that?
Sorry?
There was some question of the elevation of the pavement in the vicinity of one of the doors on back when you were changing the door.
Well, I know there was talk about the smoking back towards the building, but such as the, it was, at that stage when the storm water, or the groundwater rather, pushing the systems up and based on existing building elevation, that's, that was our solution to get it to work with that challenge.
What page is the grading? I guess I got it.
What sheet have you got there?
C3.
We were interested on that for the site plan review portion, but we're... So you brought this parking lot up quite a bit, haven't you, Phil, over this area in the back? But on for the water resource, the special permit you're getting, we needed to know what they were going to be doing there. And Mr. Silverman was going to get us a copy of the lease, but then he, it's a letter in here that I see that it's... It wasn't much to it, and he was going to try to get another letter. Yeah, I got that one. But the, the interest is... What they are proposing to do from, it is two sentences. "The MBTA has signed a lease to rent warehouse space at 35 United Drive, West Bridgewater. This space will be utilized to store bus and rail parts. The building will be staffed with three to five people. The hours of operation will be six to 3:00 PM," timed by James O'Hara, Senior Director of Warehouse. But we were somewhere, let me just check this.
We're supposed to be, have, it's supposed to go to government inspector, right? MSDSs on anything that's being stored there? And you're already moving stuff in?
They're not supposed to be.
They're back to tractor-trailer to end with a big forklift that was unloading it last week.
Because they were, they were asking for it, and Mike told them, "No, not until they got this."
Well, all I know is I was to track the trailer back in it.
I, I...
And they all of a sudden built, rebuilt that back door so it'll take the tractor-trailer and drive in at street level. It doesn't have to go into the loading dock.
Okay, so, Tony, what kind of parts would bus and rail parts be?
Could be anything. I assume it's probably something to do with the new Chinese rail cars. There's a lot of problems with that. There's a lot of parts that need to be replaced. Train parts, they're pretty clean and dry. Bus parts, I think, could be overly messy by modification.
Which wasn't if they're gonna store new parts, and if you're gonna bring old parts in to be shipped back out again.
They don't like the good ones. These parts that are still will probably come from China directly here, install on the trains, they'll probably go up to Springfield, which is where they're doing the actual assembly work.
So, for the record, it's just storage. This is not a maintenance facility. This is storage, rail parts...
It's kind of an empty maintenance facility.
Signals, you know, parts for the signal components of the railways, from what I understand, I don't know what bus parts they would be storing specifically, because those would likely be more at the maintenance facility, maybe they're stored in boxes and they get shipped out, but no work is being done on vehicles, they're not bulk storing transmission oil.
There's notations on what they can store.
Yeah, such as those items.
As well, not just work. They can't store that product.
Yeah, and I believe they understand that. We've conveyed that to them as far as what's allowed in that area, given that it's a groundwater protection, there's a special permit here. But there's no, no work done, no, not gonna be lubricating parts or working on these items. It's simply, people are gonna be, you know, maybe three people at most in the facility storing and organizing and, you know, shipping out parts to different facilities in the state when they're needed. It's not, they're gonna be working on these components and having chemicals or, I'd say mostly oils and other types of lubricants would be the concern here, but those wouldn't be exposed interior to the building.
Okay, so these will all be new parts? They won't be bringing, they won't be stirring used parts?
I can't say 100% that they're gonna only be new parts. I don't, I don't wanna make that statement. I'm not gonna do the operations.
Until we know exactly what it is.
From what I understand, they're gonna be, they're not going to be just thrown on the floor, they're gonna be in containers, in crates, in boxes, and things of that nature. Strictly for storing, they're not gonna be getting into the usage of the parts. That'd be for the maintenance facilities, where they have all their tools and necessary equipment to do that type of work. It's just a holding place. I mean, they can store track parts, they can store electrical components for the signals, the rail switching systems. There's a lot of different components that MBTA needs to have on hand within the vicinity of the city. So that's essentially, from my understanding, what they're gonna be doing there. Absolutely no maintenance work is gonna occur at the facility. And we take a condition that states, you know, no maintenance work, no open repair of components shall be done interior to the, interior to the facility as part of the groundwater protection special permit. Strictly storage.
Okay, and is it, when I asked you, only new parts? You weren't sure. But if, do you have a problem? Well, will they have a problem if we say it'll only be new parts or not be...
Well, that's, that's very limiting, because saying it's an electrical component, they can't have a used piece of electrical equipment, even though it's not a hazardous component.
Well, we don't, we don't know, 'cause nobody's telling us. So what we're, we're taking is the level of safeguard that we want to, and we don't wanna see junk coming back in there that's dripping oil and asbestos and whatever all over the place and them doing something with it. If it's, if it's all clean, new stuff, in boxes, on pallets, in concealed barrels or pails, if it's liquid, that will go out that way to we, we can, we can live with that. If it's something that, that isn't, now we start having, we have, we're concerned. So maybe we better find out whether they can go with that, because that's, I think where we're headed. I know that's where I am headed.
No, I understand the concern, and I would not be opposed to a condition, but just the wording of it, only new is very limiting. So, I mean, I would say something of no, no storage of mechanical parts or used mechanical parts, if that's the concern with what's regarding the fluids. So there's a variety of other parts.
Well, okay, you were saying like electrical. What if they bring a transformer back in, and if some of the old transformers, they had some pretty nasty stuff inside them? And are we, we don't want something like...
No, I understand that concern. I mean, that's, that's, I'm just wondering if there's, if we can come to some language that's...
Well, the only way we can safeguard the old stuff coming back is if we say no, no old stuff, because you're saying, okay, if a, if a wheel comes back, it'll be one thing. And I'm, you know, I just picked a transformer, 'cause you were talking about electrical stuff being as if it's being clean. Well, some electrical stuff isn't clean, and I don't know what kind of stuff they had there, but with all their underground trains and trolleys and, and everything else, I'm sure they've got some pretty, pretty nasty stuff that could, could come out of there. So if they start bringing old stuff back in there, and somebody says, "Oh, it's dirty," so they go out in the parking lot and they, and they hose it down, you're only about 1,000 feet from our well. You're, you're right there.
No, well, I understand that concern. I guess, no, we could live with that condition. It does make sense the way you did describe it. But, I mean, from what we were told, it's primarily newer components to have on hand to replace things when, when it's needed. But, like I said, I can't say what they're gonna do in two years if they would, if they're not, just as far as operational...
Well, the answer is they're gonna do what they wanna do, right from day one, because that's what they always do. 'Cause they're convinced in their mind, they only answer a DPU that nobody else can tell them. And I bought it at 100% while I worked there.
No, I mean, as far as, yeah, the facility goes, I mean, I guess we could accept a condition limiting the, you know, storage of hazardous materials.
Well, you know, that's, that's, that's it. It's, you know, it's only that, that much. We, we asked them to, to tell us what they're going to be doing there, and, and they said it's a karma period and another period, so it's two sentences there. It's three, three lines. It's double spaced, so it looks bigger than it really is. You know, they, they haven't...
They should have gone and printed.
They haven't, they haven't told us. So we're, we're trying to safeguard our water resource. That's why we have the bylaw. That's why the, the Commonwealth set up this kind of review so that we can do it. We didn't, we didn't dream up this Water Resource Protection District. The state determined what areas should be protected and where, where the outlines of these zones are, and that's what our bylaw is based on. And we're supposed to now come up and, and protect it. And if we don't, we don't know, we're not gonna okay it. And, and this, these are special permits, they're inspected by the building inspector, building official yearly. And if, you know, if they, they get in there and a year from now, he sees, he's some, you know, something that's, he's gotta shut it down. I know they're, they're big and everything else, but it's, it's, it's gonna get messy and we don't, you don't want that, we don't want it. Nobody, nobody wants it. So that's why we're trying to figure it out beforehand, just exactly what it will be and what it won't be. It's, you know, it sounds, it sounds very, very, very nice, but, you know, they, it's, three, three words, bus, rail, parts. That's all. Actually, it's, so it's, it's two words, two words. It's a bus and a rail, and it's just gonna be, it won't be a whole bus, it'll only be parts of it. That isn't, that isn't telling, you're just not telling us much. So if we're, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it very restricted. If you wanna bring, you know, if you can come up with something else and be more specific...
It seems they either have to live with us putting these restrictions, only new parts, or they have to give us a good accounting of what's gonna be in there.
Yeah.
No, I understand. I think we will accept the condition...
What's going on right now is, it just doesn't work.
No, I mean, we will accept that condition, and if that does not, you know, if it turns into a concern for MBTA, then we'll have them produce a full list, then we'll come back for a modification. But I understand, it's frustrating when that's the information that's given to us. I mean, I wish I had a more comprehensive list to give to you guys. I really do. And I understand your, your position, and you have to provide appropriate conditions to protect the area, but...
This is something we asked the first night, we, we did discuss this, because it isn't just a site plan. Yes, we were interested in the parking lot and, and the lighting and entrances and everything. We are, we are interested in, but the main, main concern is the site plan, I mean, is the special permit. Now, we closed the hearing and we write this, if they don't like it, they're going to have to come back and it's a whole new process, re-adaptation and everything else. And in the meantime, they can't be doing anything. Now, apparently, they are doing, doing something in there, and we'll have the, a building inspector go up and, and check it out. But theoretically, until we give you the, the permit and it's filed with the town clerk and the appeal period has run out, they should not be doing anything. And apparently, they, they, they are, so, you know, if, make sure that you, you want it, 'cause otherwise, it's gonna be, you gotta, to do an amendment, it's a, it's a whole new ballgame. It's a whole new, new hearing. If you were doing a, you know, a minor change, you say we, we wanna put a door in with, with windows in it, whereas the original design had a solid door, that's nothing. You know, we, we wouldn't worry about it, but if you're, you're coming in because you're going to wanna be, be more general in, or wanna do more storage in there, then we're gonna be concerned, so...
We understand, and I believe what they'd like to do is accept the conditions as, as you guys deem necessary, and if we do have a need to modify those conditions, we understand that we'll have to request to reopen the, the public hearing, and we would make it clear to MBTA that a very specific list of materials and equipment that they're gonna be having in the facility will be required for, for that amendment. Until then, they'll have to abide by the conditions as issued by, by the planning board for the special permit. And what I understand, that would be the storage of new equipment, new parts, equipment, replacement parts, things of that nature.
Anybody got anything further to add? I know I've been doing all the talking.
I mean, anything that's in there has gotta, everything that they have, and everything...
That is manufactured nowadays has MSDSs, so every product they have there, they've gotta have a list of MSDSs on the materials the safety has, anything that's gonna be done. Any products in there has gotta be, I believe should be, it's gonna have to be packaged to DOT transport regulations. I think that was spelled out to us by the water department on, like, containers of oil and stuff, as long as it's in a container that's proper for shipping down the road. But once that container is open, it's a different story. But if it's just to store pallets of, of something that's in a proper container, they can do it. But once that container's open, now it becomes different, and it's definitely no manufacturing. I mean, what do you call it? Maintenance.
So, okay, you just brought up a good point, so that anything that is a liquid should be stored...
Should be your merchant products in proper storage.
You know, be stored in its original containers and shipped out in its original containers, so that it is not open...
Yeah, if it's gonna come in and on a, if it's barrels coming in on pallets, then its barrels go out on pallets.
So no moving things to smaller containers, essentially. If you're in a large shipment of something...
If it comes in in quart cans, a case of 24 quart cans, that case goes out with 24. You don't, you don't take a 55-gallon barrel and put it into bottles and ship it out. They wanna do that at a maintenance facility, that's a different story.
Understood.
It's the protection issue. Otherwise, it's gonna be, they're gonna have to do a lot of interior work in there, because I know that building quite well, from when it was originally built by Chadwick's, and there is little to no drainage on the inside of that building. So they're gonna, they would have to take and put in tight tanks, drains for accidents, you know, so they don't wanna get involved in that.
No, they don't wanna bring, they're not bringing vehicles or anything of that nature interior to the building.
You have the one gallon of the wrong chemical.
Okay, so, so we got a couple of conditions there. One will be the MSDSs and all liquids to be...
Maintained in proper containers. DOT.
Maintained in their original containers.
Because I believe all your oils and stuff like that have like a DOT stamp right on the cases and on the containers to state, because you can look them up and it'll say, you know, if you look up the number, it'll say it's for XYZ type of product.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add, in one of the emails that described what they were doing and they, where they referenced the repair parts for the buses and rail, it says they did not intend to store chemicals, only physical parts. So I may even suggest you go as far as to say no liquids.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, all right.
That eliminates the major concern of pollution.
Mm-hmm, no, 100%.
Make a rust for 100 years, you won't get any pollution.
Okay, so, our, our conditions will be, they have to produce the, is it MSDS?
MSDA, MSDS.
MSDS.
Yeah.
And F is the last one?
S.
S, yeah.
Okay. Will have to be submitted to the building...
And the list must be maintained, because you could get, first load of stuff comes in, and then they're not providing it for the rest of it. Every product must have its own MSDSs that's gonna be stored in the warehouses.
There'll be no, no liquids, no storage of liquids? All, only, let's see, other way, only new parts in, in...
In proper, improper manufacturers packaging.
Okay.
'Cause it could be, it could be in a box.
Adam, could you remove that so that...
Sure.
Our recording secretary is kinda...
Oh, I'm having a nap. I've been writing this down since I left. I thought we said something I'd say.
I, I, no, no, no. It's just that, I, we, so you, we can, we can see each other when you read them all back to us.
Oh, true.
Yeah, it should be manufacturers packaging, 'cause it...
Okay.
I mean, some products might be on a pallet...
Yeah.
And strapped, and wrapped in press, some might be in boxes, but it must be a manufactured packaging.
Anything else for conditions?
If you're gonna bring them in, what if they bring in, I don't know, 4,000 ball bearings? Can they split them there?
I'd say no.
Well, they, they, usually, I, well, they, they usually come in in unit packages or something.
Yeah, that's what I, well, yeah, but, I mean, you know, something that's in a large package, can they break them down, 'cause, you know, they don't need...
As long as it's still...
4,000 of that unit, they only need four.
Yeah, why is it still in a package? I'd say, yeah. You wouldn't be, but if, but if they bring in bulk stuff, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, if they bring it in bulk and then split it out there, then I wouldn't...
What do you think, Tony? Would they be doing something like that?
I would think...
Okay.
I would think delivery and...
I mean, it'd be a lot nicer if we, we should, there should be someone from the T here telling who's aware of what they're doing. Say, "No, here's, here's exactly what we're doing, and these parts are, gonna stay here for a few months to maybe six months, then they go to Springfield when CRRS or whatever their initials are, is ready to install." And that's fine, that's, that more or less answers the question. Right now, we're just, it's a bunch of whatevs. So we feel obligated to think of the worst-case scenario, which is what we have to be prepared for, but not what we hope for.
So are you saying we should get somebody in, or should we just put the worst-case scenario in, and have they...
I think if we, if we, if we're firm in what we, what we have for conditions, then we're probably okay, but I think we, these conditions have to be, we need a response from the MBTA, that they, they agree with these conditions and intend to comply. We can't just, hey, we wrote it down, and they didn't do it, so we're in the clear. That doesn't work.
What, we were just talking though, and I, I said if they don't like it, they, they gotta start over, they so they can come back, so.
So essentially, as you guys are aware, they're ready to move into the facility.
Oh, they, they were.
They're already starting.
They're aware of it.
So we would like to, if possible, have conditions and, and close this out. And we understand that if changes are needed, it's on them and they're, they will prepare a package and we will come back with detailed information, seeking approval of set changes to the permit with sufficient and detailed information on certain products and certain components that they would like to store in the facility that may be in the gray zone. They're gonna be made fully aware of these conditions. Um, as you said, the building inspector will be doing their, their walkthroughs and, you know, we're gonna make them aware of those items, um, that are gonna be occurring as far as inspections go. I'm sure the building inspector will, uh, be on his game and know, that's a tub of oil that shouldn't be there, um, you know, when, when we're looking at these things. But, you know, I, I, there may be some gray area components and for something like that, would that go, would a request go to the building inspector to make a determination? So he would read the permit and say, you know, if MBTA had a question, can we store this product? Would the building official be the first contact? He would make the determination, say, that falls within the guidelines of the permit and they should have conditions. That's okay. If not, cause he's gonna be doing the inspections, if he deems it's not okay, then we will seek to modify the permit, um, to satisfy the tenant's requirements.
I think that it has to be the building inspector and, and/or the permit. The only two ways it can change. There's no other thing that can change it.
Yeah, I, I think if it's any doubt in his mind, he's going to come, come back to us to reopen it.
I know there's a lot of gray zone and-
Yeah, he isn't gonna take it on him, on himself.
As far as what, what, what falls under the permit, what doesn't. So I would recommend that MBTA reach out to the building official if they have any questions regarding what's allowed.
I don't like the MBTA, but they have a history of not doing it.
Yeah.
Want to comply with the rules.
I would hope so. I mean, they-
I mean, they're not popular with the public.
No.
And the public is skeptical every time they do something. I mean, that's, that's the truth. And we are here. I mean, we're out in the outskirts of their districts.
Okay, Joanna, could you read back the conditions?
Um, well, if you get the exact wording, I will watch the tape again, so I'm gonna have it.
Okay.
Um, every product has to have MSDS. Is that packaging? I'm not sure what that is, the MSDS.
Documentation. Just MSDS documentation.
Okay, thank you. I just, I missed that.
They call them like safety sheets, so it details if there's any, uh, the list of chemicals that are part of that product.
Um, all liquids maintained in their original containers?
No liquids.
No liquids.
Oh, you changed that? Okay.
Yeah, no, we changed it because, because-
Another twenty minutes, I'm gonna tell them, you can't even go in the building. You're gonna stay in the parking lot.
They, the reason we changed it is they, they said that they would not be having any liquids in, in their correspondence.
Or may have been the engineer, but-
Do not store any chemicals?
Okay, so, no, it's, it's just no liquids, period.
Okay, well, that's what Tracy put in, so we changed them.
It should be liquids and chemicals. She could have a dry product.
Okay.
That gets wet and then it becomes liquid. But it's, it could be in a dry-
No, no hazardous materials. I mean, I think that kind of is a blanket statement. This, any type of oil or other type of, you know, lubricant is technically a hazardous material, so.
Once you open it, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Joanna, no hazardous liquids or chemicals. Thank you for the word hazardous. That's, that's what we were looking for. Uh, oh, wait, wait, no. No, no liquids, chemicals or hazardous material. But otherwise, they'll read it and say, well, this, this is not a hazardous liquid. So we, so we went, no liquids, no chemicals, and then no hazardous materials.
Okay.
Just to make that clear too, just in case, um, cause I, well, I had to look up what MSDS stood for anyways. Uh, it's Material Safety Data Sheet. So I think that ought to be spelled out once at least.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it's a-
I wasn't gonna try to return to say, oh, I know it is.
We, we, we all know what it's called.
I just, I, I have no idea. I just, I wanna look it up.
Well, they, uh, they, they use them all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They come with everything, so. And you choose it in the package box.
Yeah.
Of everything.
And then we did a lot of discussion, but I don't think we captured it in the conditions, was, uh, no repairs or maintenance.
Okay. Alright, uh, okay. The next one I had was no, uh, to remain manufactured, manufacturer's packaging.
That only new parts in the manufacturing?
All product, products to be maintained in manufacturer's packaging. Let them figure the rest of it out.
Yeah.
Cause they could bring, if they're gonna say they bring in something clean that's used, it's still gonna be proper.
Okay. And then, uh, only new materials, no reconditioning or no-
Well, they're not gonna recondition it.
They're not gonna-
There'll be no maintenance or repair, which we cover. That would cover-
Yeah, but, but we, we, we wanted it so they didn't, they weren't storing used parts. We do, we don't want them storing, uh, used transformers with oil in them. Yeah, so only, only storage of new materials. Yeah.
Yeah, but you, you'll cover yourself with the hazardous material and as far as if they brought in a transformer, it'd have to be empty.
But we, we had talked about only new materials, so let's, let's, let's leave, let's leave that in there. No repairs and what was the other word?
Maintenance.
And maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then, uh, yearly inspections by building official.
We gotta make it clear those, we've seen annual inspection, but he can come in at will. We have the right to inspect at any time. Yeah, reports.
Yeah, okay.
Reports must be annual, inspections at any time needed.
Yeah.
Cause basically, the other places that we have that have that regulation, it's, you know, they've gotta bring an engineer in that has to check the tanks and make sure that any plumbing is leaking or, you know, any of those that are in, have tight tanks.
And, and have the, uh, yearly inspection, uh, due January first. That way, cause they, they say, well, it's, it's a year from April fifteenth and then some other time is a year from September. Nobody knows when the year is from, so let's have the, the annuals, uh, uh-
Cause everything else is.
We, we support by that.
All licenses and things, I think it's on that decade.
And we got the no repair or maintenance. Okay. Is everybody satisfied with these?
Now, is there a, um, even though it's a CONCOM issue, it's still, to me, would be, because they are doing subsurface drainage storage, uh, maintenance plan was one filed with the CONCOM, or was that one of their conditions?
Yeah, we have a, we have a site maintenance plan for those-
There's what they call it, it's something-
Operation of maintenance plan.
Operations of maintenance.
You're supposed to have a thing in case there is something, leaks in the parking lot, they're supposed to have the proper-
Yep, and then we have a long-
Maintenance shed or something with booms and speeding.
And then we have a long-term pollution prevention plan, which details, uh, was a little blur, but there's an, you know, some-
That's what, I know, that's what CONCOM is doing.
You know, what to do and who to contact, you know, all the appropriate contact numbers with DDP to reporters fill, things of that nature.
Is there any yearly report associated with that, or?
No, I mean, the, the plan is just a plan. It's just an outline of what to do if, if things occur, uh, for the long-term pollution prevention plan. For the maintenance plan, uh, there is a, a yearly, like, reporting sheet that goes along with, you know, did they, um, you know, clean up the catch basins? Did they, um, sweep the parking lot? You know, for, for those things. That, that's mostly associated with the stormwater system to ensure that it runs properly. And I believe that's handed through conservation.
Do you want, um, any changes that they agreed to come back and reopen the special permit if there's something new that comes up?
Yeah, okay. Any amendments to the special permit shall require a new supplemental? Okay. Now, we have to make some findings. I'm waiting for her to stop writing something. No, no, let me know when you-
Yeah, I'm ready.
No, when you, when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, you're, in fact, you, these are boilerplates, so you'll, you'll have it. We, we have to make, uh, positive findings, uh, to the zoning by law. Section four point six point nine point three A is consistent with the purpose and intent of section, uh, four point six, which is the Water Resource Protection District bylaw. B is appropriate to the hydrology, natural departures, soils, and other characteristics of the site to be developed. C will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental effects in Water Resource Protection District. And D, they'll not adversely affect an existing, an existing designated will. Uh, before we vote on this, I have, did CONCOM, uh, want, uh, sultation barriers and stuff? So all, all of that is, all of the, uh, during construction, have any environmental impacts or-
Correct, yes. It's all included in the site plan set that you guys will be approving. Uh, there's a, a road control plan that shows-
It was part of the CONCOM care.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Alright, with, with that, I, I feel safe with that. Uh, then we also have to do, in section seven point five point three point one, the specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. B, the use as developed and operated will not adversely affect the neighborhood. C, there will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles, pedestrians, or greater, or volume greater than the capacity of the streets affected. D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And E, access to the site over streets is appropriate for the types of vehicles involved. Okay, so we have to, we have to have a, a motion and because it's a special permit, we have to have a, a vote of four of the, out of the five members. So we all have to vote affirmative on this. Uh, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to-
So.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let me, uh, poll the, the board. Uh, Mr. Kinnahan?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye. The vote is unanimous of the, for present. So we, we have voted on those. Now we need a motion to approve this, uh, special permit for, what is the name of the firm again?
Level Design Group.
Well, the, the, the-
Auto-
Oh, oh, sorry. Uh, Ajax United Drive, L C.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, located at thirty-five United Drive for the activity in the Water Protection District as presented. We have a motion?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. The vote is unanimous of the four present. Okay, now we need a, a vote to approve the site plan and so notify the building commissioner. Uh, this only needs a, a, a simple majority vote.
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve as presented.
Can I, can I just ask that, um, the date of the plans be referenced?
Yes.
I believe they're revised through December seventh, is that on the hindsight?
Eleventh.
Seventh.
Okay, I don't think I saw that version.
I don't, it's not on the plan. It's not in the revision box. The last, last one, the revision box, it's eleven four.
And I had a set that was December seventh, so.
Did you just change, did the date just change on that gold sheet for the whole set?
Oh, yeah, we, Dan just revised the three sheets only. I think we only, yeah, we only can't be three sheets.
We only need minor changes, though. Two or three sheets for conservation, most recently.
The face sheet should have the revision on it.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, even though the plans are up in the corner of the face sheet, which is the primary one that anybody's gonna look at before they go to the rest of it.
So if I'm not mistaken, I don't think we got the revisions that conservation required? Is that, Donna, did you get any that were dated the seventh? Do you know?
Um, the only ones I have is what's there. The roll ones came in after, um, so I'm not sure what the date is on those. Hugh, I think you had those, the roll plans?
Oh, okay.
They're all eleven four.
So is that what we're using?
Does it change that?
These are? February eighth and two seven?
No, they're all eleven fours, as I've noticed. Yours?
Yeah, they're all twenty-two.
Eleven four, twenty-two.
Yep, none of these have shown any revise.
Alright, is there anything in that pile, Missouri, or is that something else?
There was a set delivered, not, not the seventh. I don't think we got the latest, latest. There was a set delivered in December that was revised through December seventh, but that was the latest, I think, that we had.
Okay.
Those came in first. Yes, those are the first sets that we got.
Okay, so there was, there was a revision after the first set, but we definitely don't have the ones dated February.
These are all back on seven twenty-seven. These are all back in July, all of these. So those, those are all, uh-
So before we, uh, we've gotta go through the twenty-one days anyways.
Yes.
So before, within the twenty-one days, we need a up-to-date revised set of plans.
I, I would suggest you make an amended motion and the condition pending receipt of revised through February seventh.
Okay, I'll make- What we'll do is we'll take the February seventh and we'll just update the dates on every single sheet. So it's crystal clear. And we'll get that over to you. How many copies do you guys need for the record? You can-
Yeah, we, we're gonna need building inspector assesses.
File?
Six or seven, I think.
Do you want the set? Tracy?
Um, I can, if you send the electronic, I'll be okay with the electronic.
Alright.
Yeah? Uh, six.
Okay. But the date will be February seventh. Correct, Adam?
Yes.
So if you can put that in the notes, so just when you're running your, your approval, that's the date that's gonna be reflected on the plans that we'll bring by, um, we should look that up while we do for Friday.
Yeah.
And, and when you deliver them, if you could just make clear the sheets that changed since the last version, just so we're clear on, they're all gonna say February seventh, but not all of them changed, so.
That's only the three sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll give a little, um, cover letter that kinda just details-
Perfect.
What, uh, what changed. It was a couple, very small items. Mostly, you wouldn't even notice it when you're planning a plan.
The note should be put on the plan. So when the plan is filed, it's on it, because letters get lost.
Yep.
So in the revision comment?
Yeah, I could send a letter too, but to be a revision comment on-
Oh, yeah.
On, on the plan.
Correct, yeah, it'll say, um, uh, probably say-
I mean, I don't know, I got no problem with it being on, on the face sheet that says, following blank, blank, blanks, were revised, you know.
Not a problem. We'll, we'll get that out.
Okay. We gotta re, re, re-vote, re-vote on that.
I would maybe just-
I don't think we made it to the point of all it.
Yeah, we'll get to the motions.
Motion to-
Approve the-
I think it was the conditions that, that, I think it would be added as a condition that was already, um- I think it would be added as a condition that was already... So we could be amending the motion, capturing the conditions, to add a condition to have the plan set revised through February 7th with explanatory note and cover.
Whatever she said.
Okay.
Making you guys work tonight, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. Vote is unanimous of the four present. Okay, now we gotta... Did we get the site plan?
Yeah, that was...
Site plan?
That's what we just did.
No.
I think I stopped you when you started to make the motion to approve the site plan.
Yeah, no. What we just did was for the special permit.
Okay.
Now we're going to have a motion to approve the site plan. We need a motion to approve the site plan, which will have a date of February 7th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the appropriate date of February 7th, 2023.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye. Vote is unanimous. All right, you get that in. In the meantime, we'll be working on the special permit. And hopefully, by the time we get the special permit written up, we'll have the plans, and we'll then file them with the town clerk, which will start the appeal period.
Yeah, no, we'll get those to you by the end of the week. Shouldn't take any time at all. If there's any questions that come up during the writing of the permit, you know, you can reach out to myself or Dan Campbell. I can give them corresponding, if anything else comes up there, any other information that you may need.
Okay. The town hall is closed Friday after... What is it, 1 o'clock they close?
1 o'clock, and it's closed on Monday.
I don't like to work past 1 on Fridays anyway.
And Monday's a holiday, so...
Yes, yeah. And school vacation week.
Okay. With that being said, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, no, excuse... Yeah, we'll close the public hearing on...
Do we have any slips? Any bills?
Joanna?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any bills that need to go be paid?
Um, no, I think we've already got them. They've already got them when we first started.
Because the last meeting, we forgot to ask that.
Well, we still got the... Because it's the same people. We still got the public hearing open. We have 38 United Drive and 40 United Drive. My understanding, you wish to continue those?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you put it in writing for us?
Sure, sure.
And how... When do you think you can be prepared to submit it?
So, there's been a little... There was a little miscommunication with the consulting engineer for the town. They weren't aware they were authorized to move forward with the reviews. So they're a little bit behind on that.
Which is on the conservation side.
So, yeah, there was a little bit of back and forth, a little miscommunication. And then they thought they were only approved to do 35, at which they've done a great job on. They've worked on that. They weren't aware that they had the go-ahead and the deposit's been paid for the other reviews. So that's the holdup there. So hopefully, we can get those reviews worked out in the next few weeks. I would just say we'll continue to the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know when for 40, but...
We'll see when the reviews come through.
Yeah, well, it has to be to a date and time certain.
Yep.
So the next meeting is going to be March 1st.
Do we have anything that...
1st and the 15th in March, right?
I would say the 15th, just knowing that the correspondence came from the consultant that they didn't start it until today. So they'll have to do their review. There'll be comments. We'll need time to prepare revisions. So I think the 15th...
So can you just take a piece of paper and write in?
Sure.
And sign it?
I'll move to two, because technically, two.
Yeah, 38 and 40. Yeah, that's two separate. Yeah, I'm delivering on that 13. 15, but 7:30?
Yeah, 7:30. March 15th. Okay, I'll accept a... I'll entertain a motion to accept the request to continue the public hearings for 38 United Drive and 40 United Drive. Two bites of 15th at 7:30 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
All of the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous.
Quick.
This is simple. Anyways, you wanna get rid of that plan? Or do you wanna keep them?
Thank you for your time. We appreciate you guys working with us on that one. And we'll get the revised plans ready.
Sounds good, John.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
One more.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close this public hearing. All of those in favor?
Yep. Aye.
Vote is unanimous.